I'm gonna call the regular city council meeting for the city of Ashtabula to order. It is Monday, August 7th, 2023. If we can have a roll call, please.
Ms. Holman. Mrs. Mills.
Here.
Mrs. Haines De Giacomo.
Here.
Mrs. Foglio.
Here.
Mr. Spielman.
Here.
Mr. Crawford.
Here.
Mr. Roskovic.
Here.
Mr. Timmonier.
Here.
Ms. Cooper.
Here.
Mrs. Augustine.
Yeah.
And I see I went out of order. I was gone one week and I'm all... If you would stand for prayer and pledge, please.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to let your inspiration precede this council's actions and all present here today, and your assistance further us so that every word and work of ours may take its beginning from you, and so begun may through you reach its completion. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to excuse Ms. Holman from tonight's meeting. So moved. Motion by Mr. Spielman, second by Mr. Crawford. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will excuse Ms. Holman by a six to zero vote. We have still been able to meet the requirements of the sunshine law. I would like to have a motion to convene an executive session at the conclusion of tonight's meeting for the purpose of purchase of property.
So moved.
Or no, purchase and sell? Purchase and sell of property.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Haines De Giacomo, and a second by Mrs. Mills. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Haines De Giacomo?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman.
We will go into executive session by a six to zero vote at the conclusion of the meeting, at which time we will come out and adjourn without taking any action. We now have meetings minutes from our last meeting.
July 17th, 2023, regular council meeting was called to order at 7:00 PM by Council Vice President Spielman. Mrs. Foglio offered the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance was recited. Members present were Mr. Spielman, Mrs. Foglio, Mr. Crawford, Ms. Holman, Mrs. Mills, and Mrs. Haines De Giacomo. Absent was Mr. Roskovic. Officers present were City Manager Timmonier, City Solicitor Cooper, Finance Director Augustine, and Clerk of Council Bergen.
May I have a motion regarding the minutes? Or waiving the minutes in their entirety?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, a second by Mr. Spielman to waive the reading of the minutes in their entirety. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading of the minutes by a six to zero vote. Thank you. We have a city council request, ordinance number 2023115, which will repeal ordinance 2023109, granting the Clerk of Council additional leave, and we will add that to our agenda tonight. Can I have a motion to add that to our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Haines De Giacomo, a second by Mrs. Mills. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a six to zero vote. Okay? And then now we will continue on with the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few items to request. First, I'd like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Refuse Equipment and Truck Service here in Ashtabula for the purchase of a 2008 International Garbage Truck in the amount not to exceed $60,000. Funding for this purchase will be taken from the Sanitation Fund 225.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Foglio, a second by Mr. Crawford. Any discussion?
I just want to say that we really need this.
Yes.
I watched the garbage men pulling garbage bags out of our trash cans, heaving them up into a dump truck. Or it wasn't even a, it was like a truck. I don't even know what kind of truck it was. It was a truck, a small truck, and we need this.
Mr. President, just for some background information, we have four garbage trucks right now, one of which is a 2004 Mack that obviously we've had for almost 20 years now. It's in, it's in pretty bad shape. The box itself was pretty bad. We brought it in for some work and noticed the trunnions were bad on it and some other springs and shocks and all that stuff. It just was not viable to repair that truck. We have been keeping an eye out for a used one as a backup. This is, this truck that we found through Refuse is actually coming from Georgia, so it's never seen a winter. It was a municipal truck and it's got just over 100,000 miles on it. So for a, for a truck like that, that's, that's very little miles. So it'll be brought up here. Refuse will go through it and then hopefully everything works out and we'll get it from there. And when we transition to doing curbside garbage and recycling with the armed trucks, this truck can still be used for other operations within the city. So it's not just something we're buying to get, get us through a couple of years. We can still use this truck going forward.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a six to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Travelers Companies through Glazier Insurance Company in Jefferson, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $227,044 for auto property and liability insurance. This is our renewal from 8/21/23 through 8/20/24. Funding for this expense will be taken from the following accounts: the 101 General Fund, the 225 Sanitation Fund, and the 503 Water Pollution Control Fund respectively.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Foglio, a second by Mr. Spielman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a six to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into a new construction community investment area tax agreement with Nathan and Vicky Belcher for their tax abatement at 100% for seven years for new residential dwelling located at 217 Lake Avenue, Ashtabula, Ohio.
Mr. President? I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Foglio, a second by Mr. Crawford. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that by a six to zero vote.
And lastly, I just need a voice vote from council on this. This is an economic development transfer form. This is for a liquor license being purchased outside of the city of Ashtabula and brought into the city of Ashtabula. Because of that, we, I have to sign off on an economic development form because we have met our limit within the city for liquor licenses. So this is a liquor license going from Hasty Pies LLC down in Pickerington, Ohio, to the Riverbend Hotel here in Ashtabula.
Hasty pies?
Hasty pies. I'm sorry, Hasty Pies, yes.
Hasty or hasty?
Hasty. H-A-S-T-Y.
You serve liquor with the pies, huh?
Or in the pies.
In the pie, maybe that's what it is. All in favor of acquiring this liquor license?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will approve the manager's request by a six to zero vote.
Thank you. That's all I have for my report. Just a couple other announcements real quick and on the lines of the garbage. I know we've been trying to educate the public on this, but we ask that you do bag all of the garbage when you're putting it in the cans. That's not only for our guys, but, but just to kind of keep things cleaner. Please bag all of the garbage that goes into your cans respectively there. And secondly, we're starting to notice a lot of leaf bags popping up places. Please remember, we don't start curbside leaf bag pickup again until the end of September. We do have the drop off down at the Public Works Department on West 24th Street. We ask you to utilize that until we start the leaf bag collection again on curbside. Mr. President, that's all I have for my report.
Mr. President, so if I had leaf bags and I wanted to drop them off, what, are there hours that I have to be there between a certain time?
No, you can go at any time to drop the leaf bags off.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President? Mr. Timmonier, how has it been since the new security cameras on that and the dropping of commercial?
We've still had a few, however, I'm pretty sure we chased one down. We were able to get footage off of somebody that dumped illegally there. I do need to follow up with the police department and our department to find out what was the outcome of that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Manager, I was, I was very, I haven't been over it yet, but I was very excited to see that they were working on the Columbus Avenue railroad tracks.
So they did finish those up.
Still bad?
They're, yeah, so it's, I actually talked to the gentleman that worked on them and he asked me how, what I felt. So I actually went over there today. The way that those rails are, because it's a four rail there, two of them are still a little bit higher than the other ones. And then the way the roads are built, the approaches are so low that it kind of is still mounted. It's nowhere near what it was, but you can't fly over it like, well, you probably could, but you'd probably dukes a hazard over it and not hit the rails at all, but it is much, much better than it was. Still not perfect.
Okay.
But I, those tracks have always been a nemesis to CSX.
I was excited. I was hoping for more.
They did a lot of work there, though. It's, it's, it's much better than it was.
And maybe now if we could talk to the railroad about the Depot Street underpass and the Center Street underpass.
We...
And Jefferson Avenue.
Where's that? Jefferson Avenue? You don't get a real good feeling going by those.
We talk to them a lot. Those bridges are inspected every year.
By who? The railroad though?
They have, they have engineers that come in.
Yeah, I know. I'm just being flip.
One year, we actually did have our engineers look at it and the report came back okay.
That was okay.
That was, that was a while ago.
They don't look good. Yeah, they don't instill a lot of confidence there, but... All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. We appreciate that. Anybody else?
Mr. President, Mr. Manager, I had a couple calls for crosswalk painting, and I know school's gonna be, I hate to say this, school's starting pretty soon. It's like the end of the summertime, but do we have any kind of schedule for...
We have hit a lot of the crosswalks already. They unfortunately have faded, so we're doing a second round right now.
Okay.
I know we've been out painting railroad crossings. We are still waiting for the county to give us a date where they're gonna come in and do some striping for us, mainline striping with their big truck. But if you have some areas, you can, we can talk afterwards and I'll, we'll see what we can do.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President? Mr. Manager, so I have a question. What, what's the ordinance on bike riding on sidewalks? And let me, let me tell you specifically what I'm referring to. On Main Avenue sidewalks, there are people, it's not me, with, with electric bikes going tw- over 20 miles an hour, and what happens is somebody coming out of a business, it's, it's just, it's just an accident waiting to happen, and I don't know what the rules are.
I don't think we have anything that regulates bicycles on sidewalks. Obviously, the e-bikes are something new, so it might be something your committee wants to look at.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? Ms. Cooper, do you have anything for us this evening?
Not tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Ms. Augustine?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you. And Ms. Bergen?
I do not have a report.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will now have our council committee reports or announcements of the upcoming meetings. Community development and economic development?
So we have a meeting tomorrow at 4 o'clock. Starting in September, though, we are gonna have a time change to 4:30, but tomorrow's meeting is at 4:00 and we are gonna have the library in as our guest. And I just wanted to say congratulations to Ashtabula Hustles Made on Main. There were, what happened, there were businesses that, it was a pitch contest for small businesses, and there were seven winners, so congratulations to those seven winners. And the amounts of money that were given out were in increments of $15,000 to $27,000, and the ask is that they would locate their business to the Main Avenue area. So I think that's big news.
It is big news. Good news. Thank you, Ms. Haines. And then we see the fencing going up at the old Carlisle Building, and we're hoping that that's an indication that that work is gonna start school, or soon. So I think between that and these new businesses for Made on Main, that'll be good stuff for Main Avenue.
I think so.
Yeah. I hear, I hear a retired hairdresser may come out of retirement just to be... Okay. Finance and Personnel Committee?
Yes, I have a report. And it's a little long. We had a long meeting.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, we did. We met on July 31st, or I'm sorry, July 21st, and we started off with our new Finance Director Augustine. She reported that all the funds are on point except for two funds. The Health Department Fund 208 shows that they will have an ending balance of zero as of June 30th, and the department will be in the negative by the end of the year. A meeting was held with Ms. Christine Hill several times to review the fund. Prior to COVID, the Health Department did not have a lot of funding, but received a grant of $360,000 from COVID funds. However, it receives these funds during a three-year period. Ms. Hill is working on expenses through the end of the year. Mr. Timmonier stated that when the Health Department made the budget, they were getting so many grants from O D H or from the state through COVID funds. This year, they were supposed to lose two to three employees in the department, and they were to go back to part-time. And as of the end of last year, after the budget was passed, more funding was received through grants. They budgeted for less staff and fewer expenses, so all this seems like a timing issue. By, by the end of the year, an appropriation ordinance will need to be done. Funding comes in from the state, the county, some comes directly to us and some does not. It has been very difficult to watch the Health Department's budget because they receive money for no rhyme or reason, and it has to be spent in certain ways for certain things, and the manager has cautioned them that taking grants is not the best thing sometimes, especially if you are just spending it to spend it. However, they are doing a great job managing this, and they did not expect to have the number of employees they do in the department, and that is throwing off the numbers a bit. Mrs. Augustine discussed the grants with Mrs. Hill, and they are going through the grants and making sure they are in compliance with each of them, and that Mrs. Hill is a pleasure to work with. Funding 804 is in deficit, and this is because we have not received the funds from the county. The county made a mistake and didn't assess the taxpayer for the loan payment the first half of the tax assessment. But we should see it on the second half of collections. Mrs. Augustine did an analysis of the county estate fees, and the budget was $129,000, and we have already spent $108,000. Her projection was that the year's end, we will have $216,000. She's not sure why the projections are so high, but it may be due to all the projects we have going on and fees have increased. We have to decide where we will get the money to pay for this. It's approximately $82,000. We probably will have to do a supplemental appropriation at the end of the year. The Finance Director spoke about how the city seems to either keep assessing resident taxes and sewer payment or lack thereof and write them off if the money is not received. She is not in favor of writing them off and would rather put those accounts into an uncollectible fund account, and if payment is received, she can reverse the action. She stated it is good to write them off at the end of the year, but as she learns more about the city, she will be able to see what she would like to have done with those accounts. A discussion was held by Ms. Cooper and Mr. Timmonier on how the city can assess through the county taxes for sewer, trash, property, maintenance, and mowing. Ms. Cooper stated it would be worth a spot check to make sure that the assessments are being put on the tax bill. Mr. Timmonier also stated that the Treasurer's Office has also put, put on an extra person specifically on delinquents to go after past taxes, and that that is why our numbers are looking higher. The last item for discussion was income tax. Income tax has been turned over to the Ohio Attorney General's Office, and residents are getting letters regarding owed back income tax. A release was placed in the Star Beacon advising residents of the letters that are going out and that it's not a scam. Assistant Finance Director Sheldon got involved in the collection process over a year ago, and as of this year, they are sending out billings for the 2022 tax year. The perfect process is to bill in July, give 30 days to pay. If they don't pay, send an assessment letter, and after 60 days, it is then certified to the Ohio Attorney General's Office for payment. In a perfect world, we do this every year. Eventually, they'll get there. There are accounts now from 1998 through 2010 which are uncollectible and are bogging down the system and whom the Ohio Attorney General's Office cannot collect. A discussion was held and it was agreed that I will formally make a motion to bring to council that back income taxes from 1980 to 2010 that are uncollectible be written off by the Finance Director. So it is the recommendation of the committee that the back income taxes from 1980 through 2010 be written off, and I'm making that motion.
Right. We have a motion to get rid of the back taxes from 1980 to 2010?
It's, actually, I think it was 1998 was the, I think that's what I have in the, in the notes. I think it was...
It is 1998.
1998 through 2010.
2010. Okay.
Yes.
We have a motion by Mrs. Foglio?
Second.
Second by Mr. Spielman. Any discussion?
So this is just a process to make it cleaner for the computer system. So we're not gonna get this money. So us writing it off isn't giving people, hey, a break. It's just, it's not collectible, and we need to clear it off the system.
Yes. The Ohio, yes, the Ohio Attorney General's Office can't collect that money. So it's, it's just cleaning it up for the system, for the office, so that they can go forward with collections. Yes.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that by a six to zero vote, and I imagine that'll be coming to us next week.
We are, I have to go on.
Yeah, go ahead.
We are also terminating our association with Weiner and Associates for Delinquent Accounts. The city manager was up next, and he stated that we are holding our own staff-wise. Two more people went through the CDL process, and that is working out great. We have had some shuffling in the city departments and have problems getting entry employees and didn't have as much summer help as we would like, but we are getting by. We had a retake of the lieutenant's test at the police department, and two people passed and are on their way to the interview portion of the exam, and one lucky person will get a recommendation from the Civil Service Commission. Lieutenant Dibble is retiring, and Mr. Timmonier and myself agree that a resolution should be completed and presented to him. So I am making a motion that a resolution be drafted for Lieutenant Dennis Dibble on his retirement.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, a second by Ms. Haines De Giacomo for a resolution honoring the retirement of Lieutenant Dibble. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will do that by a six to zero vote.
Now, I'll, I'll check with the chief. I don't know, are, are you guys having a party for Lieutenant Dibble? Oh, you did? Well, then that's done. So we'll have to check with Lieutenant Dibble to see if he, when he wants to come here. He is going back to the Sheriff's Department, and he's going to be the resource officer at the county vocational school because Deputy Pietro has retired, so... Chairman Foglio noted that former Finance Director Tracy Welch came in to help our new Finance Director for eight hours and should be paid for such time, which was passed. Now, do I have to make a motion to have her paid, or, Ms. Cooper? Do we have to do a motion to have her paid, or... Or did we do, did we already pay her? I'm not sure.
I thought we already decided.
Did we already, okay, so, okay, that was passed. Okay. And we also discussed having a temporary fill-in for when our clerk is on maternity leave, and I believe Phyllis from Geneva has agreed to help us out. And the last thing is Mrs. Augustine's 90-day evaluation is, is already here, and so is she, luckily, 90 days. So we will schedule a date for her evaluation, possibly at the end of the next Finance and Personnel meeting, since maybe we'll all be there. And the next meeting is August 18th at 8:30 AM.
Very good. Thank you for that report. I have contacted Ms. or Phyllis Dunlap, right? And I'm waiting to hear back. She originally said, yes, she has a wedding, I think, in September. So hopefully she'll be getting back with me when she can come and join us, so hopefully. All right. Public Works?
Public Works' next meeting is scheduled for August 28th. We're still shooting to hope for a work session. Correct, Mr. Timmonier?
Possibly we did get a bunch of questions back today, so, or, I'm sorry, not today, last week, so we did answer quite a few of those, so they're still compiling the final report. Yep.
And Safety Forces?
Safety Forces were scheduled to meet August 28th.
All right, very good. The Planning Commission had a meeting last week. We had three items on the agenda. They did approve a sign for the American Legion, one of those neon signs and so forth, with the caveat that it not be too bright for the neighbors across the street and that, you know, letting them know that it may have to be adjusted depending on how that works out. They approved reducing the number of parking spots at Chestnut Village. I guess that was looked at by the fire department and stuff, and they all gave the okay for such a thing to happen. And then they tabled a request for a car lot on Main Avenue. They tabled a request until more information can be given, gotten, received. And then the Architecture Board is meeting this Wednesday. I just got the notification. I think on there is the sign. Is going up at the top of the hill at Wanda Beach? Is that going up? Something about a sign. I'll have to look. Maybe not that one. Maybe it's... That was done a while ago? Okay. There's a new business on Bridge Street in the old fire station. They're gonna approve a sign for that. And then looking for some information on a couple properties on Bridge Street, so they're gonna have an update on some of that. So that'll be this Wednesday. Okay? All right, we come to the public part of our legislation. This evening, we have several items of legislation. If anybody in the audience would like to comment on any of these items, you may do so at this time. An ordinance to get rid of a Dodge Charger, authorizing a lease with Cadence Care Network, a change order with Carvo and Company, the purchase of a used garbage truck for the sanitation department, and repealing ordinance which granted additional leave for the Clerk of Council. Would anybody like to comment on any of these items? Seeing none, would you read this, tonight's legislation?
Ordinance number 2023-111, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to dispose of obsolete and unneeded vehicles. Ordinance number 2023-112, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease with Cadence Care Network for certain unused office space within the Ashtabula Municipal Building. Ordinance number 2023-113, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a change order number one with Carvo Companies for services and materials in the amount of $0. Ordinance number 2023-114, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase a 2008 International 70 to purchase a two thousand and eight International seventy-four hundred Excel rear-load garbage truck from Refuse Equipment and Truck Services, Inc. Ordinance, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash one fifteen, an ordinance repealing in its entirety ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one oh nine, granting the clerk of council additional leave time.
All right, is it council's desire to handle these items in consent agenda format?
So moved, second.
Motion by Ms. Haines De Giacomo, second by Mrs. Foglio. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will do so by a six to zero vote. Can we have a motion to waive the reading of the legislation in its entirety?
So moved, second.
Motion by Ms. Haines De Giacomo, second by Mrs. Mills. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading by a six to zero vote. Is there a motion to waive the charter requirements of two readings of the legislation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mr. Crawford. Is there any discussion? I just have a question, Mr. Timmonier, where, where, do we own this building that we would lease space? Or did we, is, the building hasn't transferred yet or?
Yeah, the building hasn't transferred yet, but we, we have been in communication with the new owner of the building about this. I think this lease only goes till the end of the year.
Okay, so then.
It's just a renewal of their current lease, basically.
But we, we would still be the people to do that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Would you please call the roll on the charter requirements for two readings?
Mrs. Haines De Giacomo?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman? Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
We will waive the charter requirements of two readings by a six to zero vote. We will now vote on the adoption of these items, please call the roll.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman? Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Haines De Giacomo?
Yes.
Tonight's items of legislation have passed by a six to zero vote. That's it, right, for legislation, okay. Is there any unfinished business to be brought before council?
Mr. President, I was just gonna have Mr. Manager go over the, the long grass policy that we have. I get numerous calls on how long is the grass and then cutting it and then kind of the process. I know we try to give people the, the benefit of the doubt and then how does that work?
Mr. President, Ms. Mills, so the height restriction is eight inches for the city, so anything over eight inches is out of compliance. Typically, when we get reports of this or see high grass, we do send a letter, we give them a certain amount of days to comply. If they don't comply, it goes on our list, which we, we pay somebody every year just to mow people's properties that they don't take care of. And sometimes that list, obviously, can be extensive, but we do then also, they can also be sent to the solicitor's office for charges.
Mr. President? So, Mr. Manager, I know you and I have been shooting back and forth emails, but there is a property on Jefferson Avenue, it, it's, they're just repeat, repeat offenders.
One of several, yeah. Unfortunately, yeah, they're one of several, so we've been there to cut that property two or three times already this year. We'll be going back again and they have been referred to the solicitor's office for charges.
Good.
Anything else? Anything else on your new business? Unfinished, no? All right, does anyone have anything they'd like to share for, tell us something we don't know?
I do have stuff, but let me, let me get my phone.
Mr. President, the F O P Fish Fry is coming up on August thirty-first, Chief. F O P Fish Fry is August thirty-first at the Elks Lodge. So if you want some really great fish, come out to the F O P Fish Fry.
Do you know the time, time on that, Kim?
I don't. I usually.
Usually like two o'clock, it's like an afternoon, evening.
Yeah. I was trying to look for the email I got, but I can't find it.
Can you give us the time at the next?
I will, I will, at the next meeting, I'll have the time.
Okay.
Yes, to be announced.
Okay.
To be announced.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The la- the last band's on the beach, Stratford Hill, was well attended and the very last one is gonna be next Thursday, August seventeenth, Ernest T. from seven to nine.
Oh, I like that, August seventeenth.
Yeah, it's like the end of summer.
Yeah, isn't that crazy, huh?
I found the times.
Went by so fast, you know?
When, when does Lakeside go back?
Twenty-third, I think.
Yeah, it's early.
St. John's goes the seventeenth or sixteenth and then, the seventeenth and then Lakeside, I think, is the week after.
When, so when does our lifeguard at the beach, when does that go to just weekends?
After the, the week of the twenty-third, it goes to just weekends and then Labor Day is the last guarded day of the beach.
Okay. Okay.
Very good. I, I would just like at this time to give some kudos to Mrs. Mills, who was involved in the giveaway at Station Avenue School. What, what an event, I mean, there were people everywhere, the line of people was amazing, the parking everywhere. And, and how well organized, you had that all, you were part of that. You know, they had the shoes, the book bags, the everything, so, and I know you worked with them all year and I just wanted to give you kudos for being part of that, because.
Thank you, but it's, Francis, the director, does an amazing job and they had, I think, registered five hundred and forty-seven registrations, so it was a constant two and a half hours. So you see the need that there is, they had shoes, backpacks, they were full. And then behind the scenes, the ladies that, for months and months ahead of time, that stuffed them, they know what supplies have to go in there, they work on some donations, some grant money. They had face painting, they had hot dogs, they had lunch, they gave toiletry bags and we have a boot giveaway in October. Thanksgiving, we do a meal and then there's a Christmas party, so we're winding down the year, but it's a great event.
Yeah, that back to school thing was, yeah, how nice that kids will go back to school to have a book bag and, and shoes and that's just great.
Getting excited about new shoes or something about new shoes and watching their face with a cool backpack and then they're excited to go.
Yeah, yeah, that's neat, I just thought that was great, I was able to stop for just a little bit, congratulations to you.
Yeah, it was good to see you there.
Yeah, but you, you were working hard there. Okay, anybody else have anything for, tell us something we don't know? No? Okay, is anyone in the public would like to address council, now would be the time to do it, just approach the podium and state your name?
David Hubbard, twenty-two forty-eight West Thirteenth. And I've been several places, the mayor's, your manager's office and talked to different city people and even called Foglio. And for years, we have a section on Allen Avenue, I live right on the corner, Thirteenth and Allen Avenue. The street is collapsing. This has been going on for years. And the city's come a couple times, put a little tar and build it up a little bit, but something's underneath the road collapsing and it needs to be taken care of. Somebody's gonna get hurt.
That's on Allen by Thirteenth, right?
Right.
Mr. Timmonier, you have that on your?
Just south, south of Thirteenth and Allen Avenue, right on the corner, you can't miss it.
So, Mr. Timmonier, is, is aware of this and you'll have that?
Yeah, we'll go take a look, actually, I think I had a report of Allen Avenue near Carpenter.
That's a long ways away.
Okay, okay, I, so I was thinking of something, okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll get there and take a look at that, Allen Avenue and West Thirteenth.
And might as well mention our stop signs. Every time they snowplow during the winter, the city just keeps hitting our stop sign and it's all bent over.
Is it bent over now, still?
Been that way for years, too, every winter it gets worse.
Well, they would check that way, they're there, yeah. So Allen Avenue, yeah, I had a report about Allen by fifteenth, what did we pay last year, fifteenth?
Yes.
Somebody said when it rains, we're hard, Allen floods in that area because the water rushes.
Right on the corner there, yep.
So we'll just take a look at Allen Avenue in general, you know, so. All right, thank you, Mr. Hubbard, anything else?
Thank you, that's all, that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing nothing, council will adjourn to executive session at which time we will come out, adjourn our meeting and go home, but no further business being taken. Thank you, everyone, have a good week and we will see you on August twenty-first.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, who do you want in your executive session?
Mr. Timmonier? Everybody should come in then, okay.